I think Michelle and Dave are the only two. Nancy, you all set with that?
Yep. Got it.
All right, it is 6:01 and we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for participating again tonight. This is our fourth Library Building Committee meeting. We have, hopefully everyone received the agenda and the handouts and prior to the meeting. Just want to sort of take a moment again to thank everyone. We've done a pretty good job thus far and excited about where we're going. Is that?
Here's Michelle.
Oh, that's Michelle, okay. Welcome, Michelle. All right, so we'll go right into item three, which is old business. And is there a motion to approve the minutes from August 26?
A move, we approve the minutes of August 6, 2020.
Second by Lois?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye, I guess. We're done.
Aye.
Okay. Great. Okay, we are going to roll into new business, which is item number four. And as you already called, our last meeting, we, Tai Su Kim Partners, presented to us on sort of what they did back in 2016. And also, there was a timeline that envisioned what our work with them might look like in 2020 and 21. So we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to review and vet their presentation. And it's our hope tonight that we can discuss what we think about the architect and possibly entertain a motion to move forward with Tai Su Kim. If that is the well of the body, if not, we can open it up for other items and other potential architects. But again, our charge allows us to reengage with TSKP. And if we do not, then we have to go out to bid if we want to use a different architect. And so I just wanted to first open the floor and sort of get some feedback from folks as to what you thought about their presentation. And secondly, some of your thoughts about whether or not it bodes well for us to entertain moving forward with TSKP. So I'll open the floor to get some feedback as to the presentation initially.
This is Fudanzi Grantez. I thought that the presentation was pretty good. And I think during our last meeting, after they presented, there was some discussion with regards to them providing us a budget as to what the library would look like adjacent to 330 Park. So, you know, before me, myself, before deciding to go out to bid again, I think that, you know, they've done a lot of work. They have an understanding as to what the needs are. They were cognizant of 330 Park being an option, but a budget hadn't been provided with regards to that site. So I think maybe we should request a budget for that site, especially when it was in their scopes, prior to making a decision whether to continue doing business with them and/or going out to bid.
Mark, please.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify what Fudanzi is bringing up. The, Fudanzi, what you're requesting of this candidate to be our architect is actually the work of whoever we engage. In other words, we're going to engage an architectural firm and we will then charge them to do what you're asking. And to ask them to do that prior to engaging them is really trying to get some free services, if you will. I think it's important to remember that whatever they've done in the past is the past. And I can say that they were very responsive to the previous building committee and the public. And whatever we asked them to do, they did. And so I would project that they will do that again, that they will respond to what we asked them to do, including looking at 330 Park Avenue site and coming up with a budget for it. So I think that, you know, what you're asking for again is part of the work that will proceed, not something that is normally asked prior to engaging the firm.
Okay, we have the ability and thank you, Mark, for adding more insight to the previous arrangements. I appreciate that. But is it possible to have a limited relationship with them prior to committing to the entire project? Because, you know, based on my understanding, and you could, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but with them having looked at it, it gave me the impression that they had a design or the designs that they had previously created that could go on different locations, whether it be the existing location or in adjacency to Town Hall. They already had that. The only thing that was missing was them coming up with a budget for that. And so I understand that money changes and the value thereof changes as well. But it seems like because they had a starting point that we couldn't have a limited relationship with them to provide us with a budget for what they've already done, just at the 330 site? Is that possible, or?
Fudanzi, this is Greg. I just wanted to chime in and sort of piggyback off of what Mark says, is that if we select Tai Su Kim Partners, we have to negotiate the scope of work and what those services will be. And they had a past relationship with us, but, you know, they are not required to do anything or give us anything until, you know, except work that they previously done, they've shared it all. But again, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves right now requesting information from them. And I think right now, we're at the point of whether or not we're comfortable and willing to work with them. And once we do, we have the ability to negotiate the scope of services, pre-referendum, and a price and all of that. And it's my understanding, and Mark and Nancy and Lois may know better, but I believe the previous engagement was a $30,000 contract for pre-referendum work. And so what we need to do at some point is decide what the scope of work will be this time and what the cost will be to have that work completed. Lois?
Okay.
One of the things that I've been thinking about is this whole issue of siding. And if it really is going to be taken to the town as a whole to discuss their preferences, it seems to me that that might be something that we want to decide earlier and not leave it to the architect to decide. Certainly, the architect can tell us whether the site is likely to be soggy and the economic development people can tell us what the consequences would be of the various sites. But I don't think really it's up to the architect to choose the site for us. I think if it's going to be a community, if we're going to follow the mayor's instructions and get out to the community for their preferences, I think we need to do that pretty quickly.
That's a great point, Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, to agree with Lois, no matter who the architect is, they're not going to select the site.
Correct.
They're going to give us facts and figures and make recommendations based on that, but it will not be up to the architect to, you know, to select the site. So I don't think we have to be concerned about that. And just addressing Fudanzi with trying to perhaps save us some fees or time and limit the architect's scope as we move forward. Greg, as you said, we'll negotiate a scope with them. But I think the fact that we have a whole new cast of characters now involved probably means that we don't want to limit reviewing anything that's been done and not necessarily accept what was done in the past and keep the architect away from revisiting anything.
Any feedback on the presentation or the firm itself? Are people comfortable? Did you like what you heard? Or what do you think about Tai Su Kim? They're very experienced in this, you know, line of work, but I wanted to open it up to you all because I have a lot of familiarity with them. Michelle?
I think that at this particular stage, what we're looking at is the decision, is Tai Su Kim the architect we want? The whole package, we are considering. We have to take a leap of faith with whatever professional firm we would look at, that they are the ones that can take us where we want to go. And also, a very important thing to me is that they can reflect constructively the desires of the community and the visual desires of the community. Are their previous preferences a concern? Not to me, they aren't. They are professional people and they work for their client. So they want their client to be satisfied and they want to have the best project and they want it to reflect well on their professional abilities. The only concern that I would have in looking at the concepts that were brought up previously, and I've had very limited contact with seeing any of them except a very brief look at them as a member of the Economic Development Commission. The concern that I have about the concepts are, are they Bloomfield concepts? They're certainly Tai Su Kim concepts. I'm familiar with their work. But what I would be looking for is that whole creative commitment to have both a Tai Su Kim project reflective of Bloomfield. I'm sort of not seeing that in the very cursory concepts that have been provided in the nine or so different variations that are shown in the presentation that you sent to us, Greg. So that would be my only concern, that we have a project that is reflective of Bloomfield. When we think about Bloomfield, or at least I do, we're diverse in many, many ways. And even if you just consider where we are all from, Bloomfield, Connecticut, many New Englanders, many of us from different states, I am, many folks from around the world. To me, we are looking at a concept of a library that is inclusive of our diversity. And I would really be interested in seeing how Tai Su Kim's design team would be able to provide that. I'm not talking about anything ethnic, but I am talking about something that is not so minimalist that it takes away from what Bloomfield residents would think was suitable, attractive, and worthy of our library. That would be my only concern. I think they're highly professional. The work that they have done in the past doesn't give me any pause from the standpoint of all of the different locations that we have before us. There's a lot to think about there. But with the work that has already been done, unless we have other architects that we want to consider, that we know we should consider, I don't, for one, I'm very comfortable with them.
All right, thank you. Leah?
My point was just going to be from the perspective of a Connecticut librarian, that Tai Su Kim is the gold standard here in Connecticut for library construction. Not that everyone works with them, but they make the award-winning libraries. And my experience of them and my understanding of them is they have a very diverse portfolio of styles, from more traditional to more modern. That was just going to be my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, folks? Lois?
I know we probably shouldn't be pressured by time, but I do feel a little pressured by time. And if we have an architect that seems to meet most of our requirements and has proven to be able to work with us, I would like to save the time of going through another selection process and move on.
Ava?
Yeah, I actually went through a library construction project in a school setting with an architectural group that was entirely not responsive. And everyone I've spoken to who has worked with Tai Su Kim has been very impressed by their ability to adapt and their concerns for the sensibilities of their clients. So I'm perfectly comfortable.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, well, I will just chime in. And again, you know, my hope is that we might get to a point when we can entertain a motion to proceed with working with Tai Su Kim. But I've worked with them on three projects and they, I would piggyback off what Leah said. They are state-of-the-art and very adaptable and creative and have built some really world-class libraries throughout the state of Connecticut. They've got one going up in Hartford that is going to be incredible. And I think that with our direction and input, we will get what we want as long as we share with them what our thoughts and feelings are and desires. Mark, please.
In terms of process, if we choose to move forward and continue with Tai Su Kim, then, I mean, I'm thinking about this as sort of a two-step thing, where perhaps we choose to do that as a committee and then the actual contract is a second step. We can decide how we, you know, how we process that rather than complicate the decision to work with them. Does that make sense?
It does. In fact, my thought was that we might get authorization to proceed with negotiating with Tai Su Kim and that whatever group or individuals are charged with that would come back to the body with a scope of services and a price and vote at our next meeting, assuming we get all the details to proceed accordingly. And so tonight would just basically be an authorization and the decision to go with Tai Su Kim in authorizing us to work on a scope of work and a price and report back to the committee at our next meeting and vote on that at that point in time. So I don't know how that sounds, but if that's workable, entertain a motion to do that.
I'm going to say so moved, so I don't have to repeat what you said. How's that? Is that understandable, like, for everyone?
I wrote it down. I got it.
You have it? Would you want to, would you feed that back, Nancy, so we all?
Nancy, we talked about it earlier, so we should have it.
Yep.
Okay.
Support.
He just would authorize them to go to Tai Su Kim and work on the scope of work and the price and report back to the full committee.
Second. Thank you, Jesse. Discussion on the motion? Lois?
Will the number of sites to be considered be defined in that scope? Will it be three? Will it be five? Will it be? Because I think that would make a big difference in terms of the number, the cost of the services. And just because, I have to say it sometime, it doesn't get lost. I think one thing we should think about is that maybe this library should go where Wittenberry Mall is, since Wittenberry Mall isn't helping us. Just saying that, that would be number four.
Well, let me just say, we do have room to negotiate, I believe, with the last contractor with Tai Su Kim. They were contracted to update the two existing plans and to look at two additional sites. And so I'm envisioning that we may do something similar to that. But obviously, the more sites you bring in.
I'm inclined to co-sign with Lois. I mean, I know that initially, in the beginning of the conversation, I brought up 330. That was really, in terms of the previous discussion, in terms of, you know, conference space and meeting space being needed, that if it were created close to 330, that could alleviate the need and also fulfill what we, as a community, expect libraries to look like and the services we expect them to provide. But I think that Lois may be on to something with regards to looking at Wittenberry Mall.
Right. And again, guys, I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, but that's not the issue tonight. We're not deciding on sites. We're deciding on whether or not we're going to engage the architect and then we can decide which sites we want to review and have them prepare for us. So I think that's great feedback, but again, we need to first decide if we want to entertain the architect and then we will give them direction as to which sites we are comfortable or want to have them look at.
Okay, so with that.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Maybe we should open it up to other architects to see what we could get in terms of a bang for our buck.
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
There's a motion.
I thought we were still up for discussion with regards to the motion. So, I mean, I understand the motion is on the floor, but I thought we were still in discussion with regards to said motion.
We are. We are. Any more discussion on the motion before we call it to vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by aye, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Okay. So the plan is, we, I'm thinking that maybe Mark and I, vice chair, will work with Tai Su Kim over the next couple of weeks to talk about a scope and a cost. And we will report back to the committee at our next meeting, hopefully, assuming we get the information and we can discuss a scope of work and a cost for the work. Okay. Next up, Elizabeth, update?
I wanted to let everybody know that we created a webpage on the Bloomfield Public Library website, BPLCT.org, for the Library Building Committee, where we will essentially be linking back to the town site for minutes and agendas. But we will also be putting press clippings and releases. Right now, we have the mayor's Bloomfield Messenger remarks up there. And I wanted to ask everybody if they could submit a headshot to me so that I can put a picture of you with your name to give it a more visual and friendly look for our public. I also wanted to let everybody know, or I guess ask everybody, what your preference is in terms of having it an in-person walkthrough of our two locations, our physical locations, or if you would prefer to do something virtual and I could walk through maybe some type of FaceTime or a Zoom presentation of just showing some spaces throughout Prosser and McMahon-Wittenberry. So I just wanted some feedback on the committee about that.
We would be able to have those walkthroughs and still maintain social distancing, correct?
If we do it in small enough groupings, yes. And we can also do it one-on-one, where just one or two people come in at a time and we go through the building. So however you feel comfortable, that would be best. But in order to look at the whole building and social distance, we could not do it all together.
This is Jesse. I was just going to speak before I have to transition to my next meeting, but I would be amenable to coming in person.
Okay.
As would I, as well.
As would I, as well.
As would I.
Okay, well, I will follow up with an email then. If anybody wants the virtual option, we can do that too. Otherwise, I'll send out some potential dates and times. And it would be wonderful to be able to show you the spaces that we're talking about. Ava?
Yeah, I would opt for the virtual option. We're in an age group and with underlying medical conditions where I'm not walking into any buildings except my house for the foreseeable future. But I have toured Prosser and I've been there plenty of times, so I'm familiar.
And then, the last item I wanted to mention was the most recent American Libraries magazine just came out for the September-October issue. It includes two articles of relevance for this committee. One is the 2020 Library Design Showcase. And the second one is Library Design in Response to COVID-19. And I will be sending out links to those articles, probably sometime tomorrow, to everybody. And I invite you to look through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
And Elizabeth, can you share with us what's on the website right now as far as the building committee?
Right now, it includes a link to the minutes, a link to agendas, and a link to the charge, as well as the Bloomfield Messenger article that was penned by the mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth?
I just want to say, having overseen this process in 2016, I want to reinforce the, for those of you who have not toured the library, to take advantage of Elizabeth's offer. I think when you see some of the space, especially the behind-the-scenes space that you don't normally see as a user, it kind of drives home your charge and will help you visualize and appreciate the work that's going to be done by the architect and, you know, understand the programming needs of the entire library. So it kind of helps explain the 36,000 square feet that the architect came up with last time and how you arrived at it. So it's a great valuable tool for everybody who hasn't taken advantage of it. And I don't think I need to come again this time, Elizabeth, but I think it's a great, it's a great service you can provide.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, back to the agenda. There were a couple of things that I wanted to mention and I forgot to do so. Once we engage the Tai Su Kim Partners, assuming that goes well, our hope is that in October, we will invite the library board to join us in one of our meetings to hear from the library as to what's important to them, what they want to see in a new library. And we will also develop a timeline to incorporate community forums, whether they be surveys or live meetings or virtual meetings, to get input from the community to help us in defining areas of town where we want to potentially to help us in defining areas of town where we want to potentially look at a, a site. So we, we do think that it's important that the community have a say, but we don't want to schedule any of those meetings until we have our architect on board and we come up with a timeline and a plan. But we, we want to emphasize that we will work with the Library Board, the community, and our architect to identify locations that will, you know, best suit the town for a, a library. And we have the Mayor on our call. And, Madam Mayor, do you have anything you want to add to the meeting this evening? I apologize for not recognizing you earlier.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you very much. Once again, just thanking everyone for their time and their energy and their effort into making sure that we have the best library that Bloomfield can really be proud of. So no, thank you for that. I know that we will be having some town hall meetings. And some of the stuff that you guys are discussing here will be good to let our, our residents know that work is being done behind the scenes, even if they can't see it. So once again, thank you. Once again, congratulations to Ava and Leah. I'm really excited about that. And I'm, I'm excited about the project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any other new business?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Nancy. I, I, I just want to pose this question. Would it be in our best interest to, prior to making a commitment with an architect, that we go to the community first and, and get feedback from those in the community with regards to what they envision? And then in turn, you know, make a selection with an architect that can fulfill those needs? I mean, I would hate for us to proceed forward with this architect. And I know that there's a history with the architect, nothing against the firm. But, you know, possibly the needs and the wants of the community has changed since 2016. And I'm not quite sure how involved the community as a whole was involved with those discussions. So I think it would possibly be in our best interest to bring it to the community before we choose an architect so that, you know, the community would have had a, a say and, and, and recognize that they're being viewed as, as the actual stakeholders before the fact and, and not after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Budanzy. Michelle, did you have something? No.
Are you talking about on the?
I thought I saw your hand go up.
No.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Any other new business? I, I would like to just pose a question to the, to the group here and ask, in your opinion, what is one thing or two things that you think a good library should have when starting anew? And sort of helping us frame a scope of mine as to what we envision our library having. And I'll start off and say that I think it's important that we have an environment that's inviting and comfortable for people. And I also like the new cafe spaces. So those are two things that I think are important. Anyone else? And thoughts of what you think should be included in a?
I, I think I would second that, Greg. And I also think we want space for our teens. We really want to bring them into the fold. So I think that's vital. I like a couple of the things that they said last week or our last meeting with the gaming and the recording session and the maker spaces. I think we really have to consider our youth as we plan this library moving forward.
Thank you, Maxine. Leah?
Some element that celebrates Bloomfield and all its diversity and history in one nice nutshell.
You mean like a space for art or sort of exhibits or?
That, generally just of, of an environment that, a vibe that tells you that it's, it's a place for culture and celebrating our culture.
Thank you. Ava?
Yeah, I, I would like to see a space that, that has a sense of connections on a lot of levels. We've talked about the teens having a space, but I would like to see the generational spaces have some kind of connection, not each plopped in their own area. Social connections, you know, and any kind of heritage that we see from our history, but then connected to what we see as the future of Bloomfield. To, to have that, that sense of flow, that the library is not sort of stuck, for lack of a better term, in one place. You know, Elizabeth has mentioned connections to the outside. You know, all, all of those, those various concepts coming together so that everyone and everything that forms Bloomfield is not disparate, but they're connected to each other because that, to me, has always been the strength of this town.
Thank you. Lois?
One of the reasons that I wanted to be reappointed to the committee was that when we were working 2016 plan, we had gotten pretty far in making arrangements with a couple of the community colleges to provide a place in Bloomfield where people could come and get certifications that would help them be more employable within Bloomfield. And I thought that it would be great for the people. It would be great for the town. It would bring people to see the town, to get certifications that would be more easy than going to some distance. The college presidents were very interested in it, and we were pretty much set to go before the whole thing collapsed. And so what I would like to see is a room that's big enough and has enough technology so that it could serve for this kind of certification class. That's, that's one of my goals. I think we could find out what kind of certifications we needed by talking to the Economic Development Commission and see what employers here are asking for. The other piece that I think, I was very impressed to go to an area in Manchester, which has been built out to be an office spaces for people who can't afford to rent an office or don't need to on a regular basis. They do need to be able to go in and, in some cases, just have a cubicle and keep their stuff there. You talk about being COVID responsible. People, this, this could happen in that kind of a setting. And I hope that we'll all get to go see that place in Manchester. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's very exciting. You can have a desk. You can have an office. You can come in. You can rent a space to have a, a business meeting. And it, you know, it's coming to the library for an additional reason than what many of us have gone for in the past.
Okay. Mark, please.
Meeting spaces. I think what most everybody's been talking about is, is meeting spaces and making sure we have the right number, the right sizes, the right flexibility. And also to coordinate that within what else is available in town and, and be well-coordinated there. So we're not duplicating things. We're enhancing what else is available and, and just making all that work. So that's why people will come, you know, to see other people in appropriate settings, whether it's a group of three, it's an individual, it's a classroom of 20. You know, so all those various types of meeting spaces are, to me, the, the real heart and soul of making something inviting.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Michelle, go ahead.
I would really like to see the old classic form-following function, but with a big flexibility umbrella over it. I would trade a whole room for a fireplace. It's one of my favorite library amenities. And it could be beautifully done, and particularly with our long-lasting winters here. I think it would be a very great addition visually and otherwise to make people comfortable. I would also like to see the architect pay great attention to those spaces. And we saw some of these examples in the presentation, and I realize a lot of them are in there for drama, the most glamorous of all the rooms in the libraries that they've designed. But I'm less inclined to be impressed by a three-story space that has to be heated with two chairs in a gigantic space or a grand piano or whatever. To think that a town like ours can afford such luxury, I'd love to think we could, or maybe a small area could be devoted to that. But basically, we really need spaces, as Lois said, that will work for us and serve our patrons. So those would be the kinds of things that I would look for. The only practical, non-practical thing is the fireplace, but I think it'd be great.
Okay, great. Budanzy?
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback on some of the other statements. I think that they're all relevant. And I think that they all add value to what our community needs and can use. I think that we should expand the technology within the library. I've gone to both locations numerous of times to utilize the computer for scanning purposes or, or just to do other things. I think that that should be expanded to include more technology and, and, and to have the ability to accommodate more people because you could go to either location at any given time. And it is packed with people at the computers. With regards to office or, or shared spaces, I, I was in Portland, Maine this past weekend and, you know, walking through the community there. I booked up against a, a, a community tank co-working space, which included office, meeting, and event space. And, you know, they had a monthly membership charge for either floating desk, dedicated desk space or a private office, conference rooms, presentation space, company retreats, special events and, and private parties. And it caught my attention to where I took a picture of the storefront and kind of like, you know, what I could see through the storefront window. And it was very inviting and eclectic. And, and I think that that is something that we should explore, keeping in mind some of what Mark talked about in terms of not duplicating services and/or space that, that can be offered elsewhere in town, namely 330 Park. And so, yeah, I, I like the feedback and, and I just want to add to it. Thanks.
Okay. Elizabeth, yes, thank you.
I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Leah was saying about that vibe of a place that you want to be in. And having a place where culture is celebrated and supported and welcomed. And as a former New Yorker, and as somebody who still lives in an apartment, you know, there's a lot of people that live in small spaces and want to go to spaces to be with others that are visually engaging, spaces that allow for art and expression. So having a space that is, has the ability to be eclectic, has the ability to be inviting so that people who are creators want to go and hang out there. And also, that's really appealing for the next generation of library users, being millennials, Generation Z, and, and the new, the new kids coming up is really important to me. And I don't know if we, Portland was brought up. They have a beautiful Maine library in Portland, Maine. And the whole facade, it's filled with artwork. There's artwork hanging from the ceiling. There's places to sit down. So when you're walking by, you see it as a space that you could go in and hang out. So having that outside approachability where people can maybe even see that there's a space for them to sit down and do things. And so the importance of whatever facade, I know that's down the road, but having that, people be able to see themselves in that space is, is really important to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna move on to item number five. Next meeting's, our next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd at 6:00 PM. And then the meeting following that is October 7th at 6:00 PM. Nancy, we have any public comments? Can't hear you.
The Mayor has her hand up first, and then we'll get to the public, if that's okay?
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you. I'm so excited about the, the vision that you all have for the library. I'm, I'm with Michelle with the fireplace, but I was also thinking of a quiet garden. It's visually appealing. It's someplace that you can go and get immersed in a book and just not necessarily be inside, inside. I don't know how it would be created, but I think that would be a great space for someone as well. I do, I think it was Ava talking about the place in Manchester that is, is a workspace, a rentable workspace. It's a beautiful building. And if we could have something like that, because we do have a lot of small businesses that cannot afford space. So whether they're just renting a cubicle or something like that, I think would be great. I really, I'm into the, the eatery, a juice bar, something where it's a destination, that the library would be a destination. I remember when my children were small, we had our library Saturdays. That's what we did on a Saturday. We went to the library. We sat there for a little bit. And then we went on to our day. And I know the world is changing, but I also believe that we can make our library a destination that will bring people back. And, and I know that we'll have all the technologies so they can download, upload, connect to Wi-Fi and everything like that. But it's gonna have to be something spectacular for people to want to come out. And that's what we have the opportunity of creating. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nancy?
Yep, we have two people. We have Sten Casperson and then Danielle Wong. So we'll start with Sten.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sten Casperson, Stix Stonehill Road in Bloomfield. Two comments. One for Elizabeth. I suggest that you post the TSK presentation that was given last week on your website. It is on the town website, but I think more people may find it more readily on your library site. People, when they find that, they're going to look at it. They're going to review it. They're going to gain comments and inputs to the town-wide meetings that you're talking about. Secondly, I took note last week of the desire to provide outdoor connection or outdoor activities. Everybody on the committee should be aware, I'm sure they are aware, that Fylee Park is just up the road. I've walked that. It's very nice. It's an easy place to get to. It's kid-friendly, et cetera. What you may not know is there is a trail on the west side of that park, which eventually is hoped to connect to the Lassolot property up near the Doncaster home. That offers another opportunity for an outdoor activity of kids, adults, various ages, et cetera. What I also looked into and found is that at the back of the old Riley parking lot, there is a trail that presently connects to that east-west trail. And just thinking ahead, Elizabeth, the opportunity exists for a loop from the library to Fylee Park, back through the parking lot, back across the bridge into the library. So you might put that in the back of your head as an outdoor activity. So you might put that in the back of your head as an outdoor activity at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Sten. Next, we have Councilperson Danielle Wong. Go ahead, Councilperson.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very excited to hear all the cutting-edge and state-of-the-art ideas. I think that we're in good hands. I just had a couple of comments, more so for Nancy, because she's representing town staff in regards to chasing after and applying for supplemental grants such as the Urban Act Grant Program as we, or as the committee continues to brainstorm and develop where they would like to see this going forward. So that was just a, an idea to kind of touch base with some of the other town staff and leveraging some other opportunities to supplemental, supplement some funding there. In regards to, just a comment here from an architectural standpoint, I would love to see the structure itself make a statement in the town such as, I don't know if anyone's ever visited the African-American Museum in DC, it is a piece of work. I've visited there twice with my children, and the outside is just gorgeous. And I know that the architects that you guys have, that you just made motion for, has a very impressive portfolio and may be able to kind of have some type of influence, like the African-American Museum design or any, any cutting-edge design that you guys figure out, just to make a statement itself in the town. I think that's very important itself, as well as all of the awesome ideas that you guys have in place inside the space. So that was just my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Anything before we accept a motion to adjourn? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all so much, and we'll see you soon, and we'll have some information about TSKP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.